Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting this Monday, June 8th, 2020, 6:00. And this is the Tully Lives, the Boardroom in the 1807 Building. I have to call the meeting to order. Mr. Tadlock, call roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Dayhart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. Do we have any community participation? Not seeing any, we'll dispense with reading that and move on to approval of our board minutes from May 26, which is attached to your agenda. Any questions or comments on those? Not hearing any. Motion for motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 regular sessions. School board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 regular school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dayhart. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion for motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not locked.
You may not have that. Motion carried. Then another fund bills. Mr. Trum just stepped out.
Don't come back, I had your check.
It's a perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
What might be some computers?
Sorry about that, I sent you that right away. There's no one out there.
There's a lot of kids watching.
Squirtles.
Squirtles.
General fund bills. General fund bills of the evening covers check number 140046 to 140113. Wire transfers, 851, ACH checks number 320 to 326, and one void check, 139392. The combined amount, $891,603.42. And now we're providing some additional information and several other bills in your packet. Questions for Mr. Trum?
Just I have just one question on the German school bill.
Oh, yeah.
Student transportation. What, um, that was just services we provided to deliver stuff? Or what is that?
They, uh, for the meals that we delivered.
Yeah.
Yeah, they provided 10 buses for that. So we had two buses to each of the sites through the entire school year. And then we're continuing the program that we're doing only in three sites. So we're doing the Tibbetts, Middle School, and West Side. And then we're just having two buses to each of those three sites.
So maybe you don't want to talk that long, but in relation to what we normally spend or what we did spend, was there, was it the same? Was it a lot less comparable?
Um, in terms of those 10 buses, I mean, a normal whole district bus won't be about 22 buses a day.
Okay, so, so it's going to be, yeah. Okay, that's, that's enough detail, that's all. Thank you.
And we did a, an agreement with our contract when we moved to the COVID piece to continue with the contract. And we would talk about that, but we also put in that if they were to receive any monies or care back or anything like that, then that wouldn't necessarily, that we would get, you know, be different from those nine dollars that we continued in our contract.
Yeah. No, we'll agree with this, this is.
The CARES Act is amazingly comprehensive. We can start to look at it before elections and it's long and right. They want you to spend money.
They want me to keep everything in place as much as possible.
Right, right, right.
Motion for motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of June 8th, 2020. Check numbers 140046 to 140113. Wire number 851, ACH check numbers 320 to 326, and voided check number 139392. In a combined amount of $891,603.42 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved to second to approve the general and other fund bills of June 8th, 2020. Checks number 140046 to 140113. Wire numbers 851, ACH, wire number 851, ACH check numbers 320 to 326. Voided check number 139392. And the combined amount of $891,603.42 as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion carried. Options Virtual Charter School contract.
All right, it has been five years since our original contract with Watson's Virtual Charter School was created. I can't believe it's been five years. So this is every five years you need to update and resubmit the contract. They have boilerplate and certain requirements that are required to be a part of that contract. So Tricia worked very hard and diligently. It has received the DPI approval of meeting the federal guidelines for the charter school and has been updated to reflect those requirements. Uh, there's just minor language changes related to the curriculum, the structure, how students working is assessed or reviewed by teachers. Other than that, most of the contract was in pretty good order and in compliance with current regulations. Um, the other piece that we did have to change is we had to create an LLC. We're previously going to require that, but, so we did create a separate LLC as part of that charter. So there is options virtual charter. That's it.
Jason, could you tell us who is on the?
Government's board?
Yeah, the governing board.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's three board members. It's myself and Tricia. You're on there. I can't remember Janice's last name.
Janice Ileki, she's a parent. And Jennifer Wharton is the community member and she's the children's librarian.
Yeah, so it's not a, you know, they're not huge fans of having any school member on, but it's still not a requirement not to. Now, if we were accepting federal monies or federal grants, we may have to change the structure of that board. We did it originally, we kept it small and digest. We were growing that because we wanted to make sure that it reflected our vision and direction we're wanting to go with. But as opposed to sometimes charters and other districts have had a hard time where they're really completely independent from the district working away. And really, it's an issue entirely in the harm of the school district, so, um, yeah.
For what? We had, I can't remember her name and I apologize for that. She was a minister. Um, she was very good because she dealt with a lot of kids, especially me and things like that.
That was on the alternative high school board.
Oh, okay, got it.
This is for the virtual school.
Yeah, yeah.
And that board's larger.
Right, that's what I was trying to figure out, but I, yeah, I, I think I did this last time we did this.
That's a good question. Any other questions?
Just a trivial correction on page five in the last paragraph. Addressing students' graduation requirements, you have a small s in front of the large s.
All those students.
Eligible, small s.
Capital.
But yes, just to show I was reading it.
The first paragraph says, I mean, that's last paragraph, it says, "School district dot, dot, and." And if eligible, or should it?
Do you see where we're at, Tricia?
Yep.
Correct the whole paragraph. The paragraph has commas and periods and capitals that are kind of messed up.
Which section?
The very last.
Bottom of page five.
Graduates will receive the same diplomas issued by the EASD period, that it says, at the other district's high school, comma, then if eligible, capital I, and then their students, there's a small s and a big S.
Yeah, so there's several punctuation.
It's just punctuation, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I copied and pasted that from our handbook, so, no, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I mean, I forget all the time.
Well, hopefully that's not in the other handbook.
I'm sorry. In the high school. So also, I wanted to let you know that I updated the last page, signature page. The document that you're looking at right now isn't updated, so I cleaned up the last signature page. Um, that, that one was a mess I shared with the.
The white page, yeah, the sign.
Yep, yep, and then, um, yeah, if, if it is approved with those changes, I, I will be sending it out to Matt for signatures and Jason and the rest of our governance board through DocuSign and then sending it off to DPI from there.
Since we're making punctuation changes, the top of page six, that first paragraph has some issues as well. I'll let you figure it out, but.
Okay, okay. How many people have read this and not caught it? Now I know who to send things to.
You give me access.
Bottom of page five is the same thing.
Well, maybe that's what we're just talking about.
Okay, okay, I thought we were going to bottom.
In addition to, tell me page six.
Yep.
Got it. I'll fix that up.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you know, this may sound silly, but it almost looks as though there's two different types of fonts.
It's a different font.
Yeah, so if you can go in and correct, that, that may be part of the problem.
Right.
Um, go in and just correct all the font to the same font.
Yeah, you can tell that that.
Yeah, which is different paragraph, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, that font, I, I have already corrected that in, in the document. I'm, this was just the one I sent to Jody too early and she probably made a PDF of it, so I did catch the font.
It's easy to do that when you're custom approved.
Any questions? I hear you, if you for motion.
I'll move to approve the upcore and options virtual charter school contract modifications to bottom of page five and bottom of page six as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the upcore and options virtual charter school contract as modified. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm guessing, the more I think about that, Tricia, is sometimes in a Google doc, like someone will go and they'll fix the corrections, but then someone else might hit a Ctrl-Z or something like that.
Right.
And does it? Because it's kind of, yeah, there are a lot of eyes on it, it's weird with that, or something funky with Google.
In the printed document, page, top of page six is fine, it's just the bottom of page five. Oh, and right there here, so.
So I'm guessing something like that.
I'll sort it out.
Okay, all right. Preliminary budget.
Um, this evening, uh, this is really the first reading of the 2020-21 preliminary budget. It's a number of document pages. Some of the information in here, we talked about back when we did the school board budget retreat, I think on March 14. Um, and then we talked about some of the state perimeters, I think a couple of meetings ago, because that's really provided a lot of uncertainty, I think, because we typically wouldn't go through a budget process this evening. And kind of just kind of starting the top of this page.
Which page?
Yeah. Well, the introduction, you can kind of read through that, I won't read through that, but if you turn to the next page, Jason. Typically, in the middle of a biennial state budget, we're pretty much set in terms of what's going to happen at the state level. We pretty much know the perimeters through Madison and legislature. And what's uncertain, of course, was the COVID-19 and how the state funding is going to affect us. About 40% of, you know, 40 to 45% of our funding from the state. That does create some uncertainty in a variety of scenarios. So the top section is what normally would be our budget assumptions in terms of what we're going to see at the state level and the per pupil increase and, and the amount of money going into the state aid formula. Because of, of the possibility of changes at the state level, we really felt it was necessary to kind of take more of a conservative approach. And one of the scenarios we looked at was probably no increase in terms of state aids, the revenue limit being kind of status quo, no change in special ed allocation, and realizing there could be other changes as well coming forward at the state level. Some of the assumptions in terms of enrollment, revenue cap, again, revenue cap, we're assuming pretty much status quo in terms of increases, but resident enrollment would be status quo. And at this point, we're looking at 40 additional students through the open enrollment program. This year, we saw almost 80. So we think that's somewhat conservative, but that's kind of the approach we're looking at right now. Budget reduction, savings or additional revenue items. The OPAP liability, the pays you go is actually going to be going down this next year and that's due to a number of retirees coming off that plan. So that's the reduction in terms of resources that could be reallocated. The option school lease payment, we're looking at repurposing that for either custodial utilities, could be even some rental of alternative spaces while we have construction. That's a possibility too, so give some flexibility. In terms of staffing reduction at the high school level, really in the German area. And then the alternative high school, because we received that youth bill grant, we can offset some administrative costs. So we use some of those federal dollars to offset that. And again, additional students you see through the open enrollment and the impact there. In terms of staffing.
I just, I just want to add one thing. On the 40 students, that's a net total of additional students. So for example, through the regular open enrollment window, we had, I believe, over 120 new open enrollment and applications. But we have 70 graduating seniors who are open rolled out. Or in, I'm sorry. So we just, just to fill them dropping off the roster, we have to have 70 new open rolled in to fill their spots. So as we gained a higher percentage of students who are open rolled in, each year, we have a larger group threshold.
Sure, sure.
And even when we finalize our budget in October, we'll look at kind of the snapshot of, excuse me, open enrollment in and out, which kind of helps us really kind of set our budget. But even after that date, we have people come and go and that gets prorated through that same system, so.
Can I just ask the German, have we lowered the number of students in the program? I know we had a change in, in staff, but do we have lower numbers?
I believe in the German program there is.
They have less of a need for some of these sections.
In terms of additional staffing or program adjustments, the elementary level, you'll see most of that, if not all of it, is in the special ed area. Looking at teacher at West Side, an aide at West Side, and additional aide for the Cape Core Program. All those three positions really started this year. So it would have been after we had the transfer service eligibility. And then we're looking at additional special ed teacher at Tibbetts and repurposing that existing position to really provide support position for the special ed department. And then an additional special ed teacher at Jackson Elementary. Again, all of those are transfer service positions. So that would be students that moved into the district that came from either out of state or weren't residents prior to that year. Middle school, some additional overloads as a result of the Abbott program. And then the high school, looking at increases in the face program. That's increasing the position from 75 to full-time. The CTE coordinator increasing that time, that's the Joanne Pella program, and she's the coordinator. Two additional positions, looking for a new aide teacher to support our aide program at the high school level. And then an additional English reading specialist at the high school as well. There's some additional coaches positions in area of baseball, softball, boys and girls soccer, and some adjustments in the event worker pay area. The positions mostly are, I think, in the JV level for the sports program and has to do with additional student participation. District-wide, increased staffing for the options program. Some of that's to catch up with the program increases we had this year and then anticipation for next year. So that's special ed, regular instruction, administrative system. The alternative high school, there's a caution, if Lake Geneva provided notice that they are going to reduce the number of students that they're going to provide next year. So as a result of that, we have to make up that difference. We may end up seeing those same students coming to us, but it would be open enrollment. So we'll have to see how that plays out. A new position, which would be a Fund 80 position, and that's a community resilience and social emotional outreach coordinator. We talked about that a little bit at the budget retreat. And then additional maintenance technology allocation as a result of the referendum that was approved by the public back in April. General fund highlights, salary and wages, we're really looking at no step advancement at this time for our professional and our support staff and then holding the same wages for our supervisory and administrators at this time. Student transportation, based on our contract, would be going up 3.5%. Health insurance, that's probably the largest single item in our budget in terms of increases. 10.5% for health insurance. Overall, general fund and our special education budget, we're looking at about 2.75% based on those assumptions. Again, assuming no change in equalization aid. Total proposed levy at this early stage, $21,112,000 or 2.68%. Dollar-wise, it's about $549,000. You see the increase in the general fund of that increase, $200,000 due to the operational revenue question. Then the increase in Fund 80 for that new position. The debt service, we haven't finalized yet because we haven't sold the bonds. And those are scheduled to be at the next board meeting, we'll have the bid results for that, so that'll be the 22nd. It's likely for the first year payment on those that we'll use some of the bid premium to offset that. So it may not be an impact in terms of our levy anyway for our debt service. And then estimated tax rate or mill rate is 9.5% or 6 cents increase. And then looking at a property value increase of about 2%. Even though with the COVID-19, we kind of talked about that because there's such a backtrack in terms of those valuations are always a January to January calculation. So based on the increases we've seen most recently, we still think we'll see a 2%.
2% is all, huh?
That's just being kind of conservative, but we will know.
Hours increased a lot.
Yours, the assessment really.
Yeah, I know it will be.
And it did the year before, if I remember right, so we'll see how that.
But we just had a rebuild, so.
Okay, so, so 2% might be conservative at this point. Well, we really won't know for sure until October, so it's just an estimate. So that's kind of the narrative portion, then there's a lot of numbers that follow this. There's the next page, which gives the forecast.
This property value is increased by more than 2% than the mill rate.
The mill rate would go down, yeah.
Right.
And it's always a function of, of the increase in property values. How much of that is really new construction? How much of this is market adjustments? Because it does make a difference.
Right.
So this is just kind of looking, you've seen the forecast model before. I think in previous probably reflections of this, I had probably going off three or four years, but I just wanted to show the current year and then the forecast in terms of how that is looking on the revenue, the expense. You'll see the difference between the scenarios and then the tax levy listed below. This sheet reflects all the staffing, but also a number of different projections. So the first one in purple is really looking at what the status quo would be if the state budget held as what we assumed it was going to be. So column one is kind of the budget scenario we talked about back in our budget retreat back in March. And then the column one A is the same, except it assumes the no-step increase for the professional staff and support staff or the administrators. So it kind of gives you that scenario as, as another scenario. And then the next one, which is kind of the light blue, assumes rather than $179, what if it was only a $50 increase? And then the yellow one is a zero increase and the green is a negative $50. So as you go across, you see those numbers get larger and all negative numbers. So how would we really balance our budget if that became our reality? I think we have a couple of sources we could look at. We certainly have, I think we'll have a positive budget balance at the end of this year, so we could use those dollars. We have monies in our OPAP trust fund of about $750,000. Those could be utilized. And then we also would have fund balance. The other thing, and Jason alluded to this in terms of open enrollment, additional open enrollment would also have a positive effect. So I think for next year, we have some flexibility. But other than the open enrollment, all those other sources are one-time money. So that would create for the future probably difficulties in terms of how do we adjust our budget. But we don't know what the state perimeters are going to be. It seems to be more and more likely as time goes on that the state isn't going to do a budget adjustment bill in either July or August because of the elections coming up. And if they do wait until after the elections, by that time, we have already set our tax levy for the year, which means you really can't go back and adjust the revenue cap. So they'd have to adjust other revenues, which they could do a per pupil revenue adjustment, but that would be mid-year. So it's hard to imagine that actually happening when you're halfway through your fiscal year.
You know, I ordered, I ordered a crystal ball just for things like this, but it turned out they sent me a snow globe instead.
And I think they're waiting to see what the feds do too, to handle the state question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, because at this point, we don't know.
Right, it's a domino effect.
Yes, it isn't a political question. It doesn't, if someone has the answer, they're just not giving it to us.
No.
Hey, we're in a good fiscal position though to wait and see. And we have reserves of monies that in, that we can cover the gap until we know, you know, in a worst-case scenario and then we'll know what the situation is.
At the state level, income taxes, I think, are due now July 15th, so that'll be another indicator how the revenues are. So, I mean, we may get more information as we go along, but we could also be here in October setting a levy. It's still some uncertainty, it's a possibility. So what follows, I'm sorry, good question. What follows that sheet, I wanted to share with you what we fund through Fund 80. It's always a good kind of review. We have our parent connection program, which we've had for years. Our community connection publication, that goes out about five or six times a year. Our community engagement coordinator, which as you know is John Anzalone. And then the new community resilience and social emotional outreach coordinator position. We also have some cost for community facility use and then we offset that with some fees as well. So that represents our Fund 80 budget. What follows that is our debt service. So that shows our existing debt service on page nine. And again, we'll have, either Barrett will be here in person or they'll just have a summary of the bond sales for us to review at the next board meeting.
So we're almost done with the middle school.
We're almost done with the middle school, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so I think at one time, there was like six different, six or eight columns.
Oh, I know, it used to be.
It used to be very long. It used to be very long, so obviously when we do a new debt, that'll get added to the schedule that the middle school will be coming off too. Like this gives you kind of the amortization schedule, the yearly payments and the total outstanding debt. The next sheets are kind of the detail line items relating to our operating budget. There's audited figures for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, this year's budget and then the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. The top section reference usually the fund balance and then revenues follow that and then that's followed by expenditures. So government accounting is fund accounting, so the general fund, fund ten is most of our operations. That's on the first two pages here, I think page ten to eleven. Then that's followed by our special projects fund twenty-one. That's mostly gifts and donations that come through the school district. So it gives you kind of a sense of the value with those equal over a time period. Plus, what was our student activity accounts? You recall there was an accounting change that kind of prompted us to move those to fund twenty-one, so now they're included in there. Our special education, even though it's an operating budget, by federal regulations, we're required to record that as its own entity or fund. So that's what fund twenty-seven is. Following fund twenty-seven, then is our debt service accounts. Again, we kind of talked about the amortization schedules on that, but that is our debt service funds, fund thirty-eight, thirty-nine. And then our, what's called our capital projects fund. So you'll see, we actually added a new budget for capital projects with the referendum and the project at St. Pat. So we added those dollars and revenues and expenses. You'll see there's a negative number there and you may wonder, well, what's that negative number? That was the improvements for the athletic area in terms of by the high school that was funded through the boosters club. So we record that as a capital project and as they pay that off, it becomes a positive. So at the end of last year, there was a negative balance, but they have now made that up. So that's why you see a negative number there. Our food service budget, you know, the food service budget is going to be kind of interesting to see how that looks at the end of the year. Obviously, we continued providing meals and adult meals and we had a lot of gifts and donations to offset that. But even with all of that, we still didn't, from a sales standpoint, didn't sell as much we normally would if we had school in session and expenses were about the same. So there probably will be potentially a little negative in that area with all of that. Community service fund, fund eighty, we talked about that and all the different programs we have in our community service fund. And then the last one is our package or co-op program. And that's the college and career academy program, formerly known as the alternative high school. And then they also have the, a number of grants that are also funded through that program. So that represents all the funds that we have. And then the final sheet is just kind of a tax levy comparison between current year and next year, based on a number of estimates. I can tell you these will not be final numbers, they will change. And they may change more than a typical year because of all the unknowns at the state level. But even with all the changes we talked about in terms of an overall levy. You know, the, the actual impact isn't maybe significant as much, I guess it could be. But you'll see then at the bottom of the page, how that would reflect the property value. And I think for a two hundred thousand dollar home, I think it was like twelve dollars based on six dollar per thousand impact. So that's kind of a summary of the preliminary budget. And again, this evening is just the first reading.
Well, you've become accustomed to a lot of uncertainty in this budgeting process, but this year is my exceptional.
Right.
It's a little, yeah, I can't think of anything.
Kind of unsettling because.
I've been doing this for almost a decade and I've seen a lot of uncertainty. This is, this is beyond, this is a little different. The normal uncertainty.
But everyone's dealing with it. Yeah.
We had no idea what it would look, yeah.
Right, that's true.
In all honesty, a lot of this business managers, superintendents, school boards, had to have a time to make up for it. I mean, I think we'd ever have to do that again, but hopefully everything repairs and we don't.
We get it.
This isn't the normal.
The airplane will be quiet.
Every, everybody.
Mr. Westcott, that needs to sit up.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate all the work you do going into this and going over and over and over it again, because it really is helpful when we get down to the mini-gritty.
I, I like to give you the final budget.
Oh, I know, believe me, I get it. I mean, I start working on mine and it's like, I can't, it's scary. Because you just don't know really where it's coming out, other than, you know, kind of educated knowledge, you know, just. Educated guesses, I guess.
On the debt service piece, Jason and I had the call with Moody's on Friday. So they'll give us our rating, which we need that for the bidding process on our, our debt issue. We're hopeful that at the very least we'll maintain our good rating. It'd be nice to see a increase in that. But I think the person we talked to with the COVID nineteen probably isn't like.
We tried to talk her into giving us.
Yes, Jason tried to.
I think it's, but she really squirmed a lot more than the last, the last one. She just said, yeah, no, that's not happening. She's like, well, I, she was very polite, but yeah, not now.
I wonder, I just had a personal property, I finally got paid. It was the biggest one I've ever had in my life. But they are definitely affected, their businesses by COVID. So I'm just wondering how much, how much the personal property would kind of hit a year from now? That, or even over the next couple of years, that we're going to get hit from businesses who have gone bankrupt, who have closed because of COVID. I'm not sure how much we have in this area, but I mean, we cover quite a large area and not just city of Elkhorn. So that's another thing that. Yeah, chargebacks that we just don't know.
We saw that in two thousand eight.
Right, right. And like I said, I just got one in today and I'm like, got all mine in. But it was this company that is actually from Illinois and this is affecting their, I think they, they cover quite a wide area. And I said, I, I was doubtful that I would have gotten it.
I will say she spoke very highly of the district, was very impressed and is a bond counselor at Barrett that was there on the call.
Yeah, Mike Clark from Barrett.
Speaking to everything that they're doing. And she did indicate that, you know, had it not been for COVID and the fact that any government entity, Moody's is really scrutinizing and that it's nearly impossible to move into that next rating area. You know, we're not far away or it could potentially be a possibility. But to keep in perspective, how many AAA districts are there in the state?
I was just going to ask.
Ah, AAA, not many.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask.
I think there's only forty or less that have the double A plus.
The double A, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we're in the top ten percent on bond ratings the way it is. But it'd be nice to move on to the next one. But that's why she said it's, yeah, very, not likely it's going to happen.
Shame this day, right, yeah.
Move on rating.
Well, as long as we don't go down, that's, I know, that's what we need, not use. That's great.
All right, any other questions for Bill or can we move on?
Personnel. On the personnel sheet, we'll have a number of new hires on the next one, but just the way the timing, the positions are going, we don't have any for this week. But we do have the transfer of John Krasnowski from a support staff position to the Jackson Head custodian position. He'll be replacing Rick Brand.
Questions for Mr. Timlock? Looking for motion to approve.
I moved.
One second.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for June eighth, twenty twenty is presented. Bill, come up, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried. School, yes.
All right, I have one gift to present this evening. The Elkhorn Lions Club has donated two hundred dollars to the purchase of books for four K students and a thousand dollars to the special education department.
There's another one in the notes.
On our notes.
Okay, did you get the ten thousand dollar anonymous donation?
Yes.
Somebody's in, I don't have that one.
Maybe it was at the bottom of the page.
There is also a ten thousand dollar anonymous donation to Tivitz Elementary to use at the discretion of, I think, our generous donors.
And we've always had that, this district.
Looking out for a motion to approve generous gifts.
I'm going to accept the generous gifts, school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
No second. A second need to approve the generous gifts of the Elkhorn Lions Club and an anonymous donor as presented. Bill, come up, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements?
All right, I'll go through these announcements fairly quick. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me and I can give more detail. But the virtual summer school is ready to launch. Numbers are significantly down, which we anticipated. I believe we have ballpark of about three hundred students participating, typically would have eleven, twelve hundred. I, I should say that's the K eight number. The high school numbers, I think, are fairly consistent with what they have in capacity. So I think that's another two hundred plus of the high school. The summer fee program is underway. We just transitioned and shifted some of that. But like, you know, we've served over a hundred thousand meals to this point in that format. Including, that includes approximately thirty thousand adult in need meals, which are covered by donations from the community. So we appreciate that. We had a meeting with the county health department and I would say that they're very, I would classify it as optimistic for the fall and their recommendations are always going to come down to local decisions. But a lot of what, I think they're really kind of abreast of the dynamics and the changes and seeing the infection rates and the percentage drop quite a bit. Seeing the new information related to that it's very unlikely for cases to be spread by asymptomatic people. Their strong reinforcement was anyone with symptoms, employees or students need to stay out of school. We asked them to, if they could further develop some guidelines as to, okay, this person was symptomatic, when can they return?
Yeah.
Give us some clear delineation on that because you could get the common cold and have a lingering cough for three months. So we know there's got to be a process there on how do we bring people back? Is there going to be sufficient testing that, you know, this kid has a cough, they need to stay out until they get tested and they can come out? So they're going to work on that. They really asked for probably July timeframe to have a better picture, which is kind of what we planned on anyway. But for all intents and purposes, the recommendation, unless things drastically change, that I feel will be bringing to the board is to have face-to-face school in the fall with screening of symptoms and really working with parents that, hey, we know in the past you sent your kid to school with a runny nose. Sorry, the kid's all gunky. Keep him at home so they're not gunky. You know, and I think that's the sentiment that's going to come from the county. We asked them about wearing masks and I see that, you know, there's different recommendations coming out on that. But they felt, especially with little kids, that it will likely do more harm than good because there's a greater risk of touching your face. So we asked them about screening the temperatures at the doors. They said you can certainly do that, but we're not going to require that and don't think it's terribly necessary. So that's something that we may, we'll have to formulate what exactly do we want to do, that'll level of comfort from our parents and the families so they feel like there's an effort being made. Obviously, cleaning, good hygiene, washing hands, teaching those practices is, you know, recommended. And we'll look at that. But if people are asking you as of right now, what it looks like, yeah, we should be able to be in school. And we'll have the other options for parents and families like we always have.
Sure, right.
You can choose to shift to the online format if you want.
And they can always come back if they, whatever they feel is right for them.
Absolutely. And we've always, we've always come back. And they do, if you are vulnerable or at a greater risk or if you are symptomatic or you can check it, you're going to be out for a while. So we'll have plans in place to support those families and students. So that was kind of where that county meeting review was. I can tell you every county health department in the state has a slightly different take on it, depending on where you're at and who's in that seat. But that's what we've been directed to work closely with county health. July return to play plans are underway. Mr. Keel and Mrs. Trotter have been working on that. And I did include a link to their screening check, but again, that's for the spring sports. So they are going to start scheduling those and the kids will be okay to return and start participating in the spring. That being said, again, the kids who had any symptoms need to not be at practice and not participate.
Spring sports?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm next.
So the track, the baseball, the spring sports that were delayed, yeah.
Okay.
Were postponed.
Because I know a lot of kids are playing baseball over there. I've seen a lot.
Oh, yeah.
They're the little kids or the club.
Yeah, yeah.
So this will be the school sponsor, WIA, when they, they close down the tournament series. But they said that starting July one, schools could resume and if they want to put together a local schedule or anything, they can go ahead and do so. So that's, we'll give the different teams the opportunities to go ahead and do that. We don't know yet how many kids will be available and will want to participate, but we're going to do our best to make sure that we have an opportunity for kids.
Are the coaches all available to do that? Generally, they'd have their summer.
There's, there's, golf is a challenge because the golf coach is a golf pro.
Sure.
So, but they have a backup plan and they're looking to make sure that we have availability. Or someone to fill in that spot. Last thing, I, I just wanted to share, so you have a heads up, this is very premature looking at it, but our partners over in China. Prior to COVID and the political climate, they, they're very resistant to online classes. They wanted exchanges face-to-face and that sort of structure. And then they did the English investment, you know, in China. Political climate over there has also changed in the support to where the government's pulled out the approval of doing the, like, English immersion courses and so forth within the Chinese schools. That's all part of, you know, they don't know how long that will be. So David An, our partner, he approached me and asked, would we potentially be open to an online partnership where courses are delivered online for the students? So Christine Lehrer is piloting a Zoom English class for the students over there to see how they like that. But he said that there's a big demand from parents who still want to continue that, but they have to do it like an extra curricular outside of the regular school day, so like a night class. Yeah, so we're exploring that as a potential possibility to be a tuition-paying type basis. And we had a vision where if they have enough kids to enroll and they basically have like an adjunct teacher that's willing to teach the class, then we could set that up and let them take the course online. So I'll keep you posted with, you know, as we move forward and look at that. There was something that we really looked at in a model I liked to start off with, but David thought like there's not a market for it in China because they don't like that.
Well, they don't really have a choice, neither do we. I mean, we're just at this point, right.
There's a little bit of a pinch on visas.
Yeah.
I feel like this is going the way of Russia. Remember we had the Russia exchange at one time.
Yeah, we had a great Russian partnership.
Had a great Russian partnership.
A lot of times.
Environment changed and we had to cancel that. Things change.
Yeah, that's all I have for the announcements.
Question to adjourn, I guess.
Oh, I was going to ask, and I keep forgetting this, but are there any agenda items that people want or topics that you want this? I meant to, every board meeting, I forget. Anything to the. I meant to, every board meeting, I forget, anything to be added to the next board meeting or anything that people would like to see discussed. Just a reminder, you can always email me if there's something to the conversation.
Sorry, I have the adjourn motion from our, one second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.